All right. Thanks, Brian, and welcome, everybody, to this February 14, 2022, meeting of the Homewood City Council. I don't think we have any proclamations for tonight, so I will go ahead and call this meeting to order, and we will start with an invocation followed by the pledge and believe our own -- Dr. Jones is going to do the invocation tonight. If everyone will please stand.
If you'll please bow your heads. Mighty and merciful God, as this day draws to a close, we pause to give you thanks and praise for the peace and prosperity of our fine city, for the joyful noise of the children in our schools and in the parks, for the comfort and safety of all of our citizens. We pray your blessings upon our police officers, our firefighters, our park and recreation workers, our street and sanitation crews, our librarians, and all the clerks and administrators who so faithfully serve this city, making Homewood our home. We pray that you will send your spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice upon this city council, along with the mayor and his staff, so that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve to promote the well-being of us all. And we, as a community, keep your commandments to provide for the needs of the less fortunate and show hospitality to all strangers. We ask all of this in your holy name. Amen.
Everyone will face the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Ms. Salter, if you will, call roll, please.
Yes, Council Gualphie?
Here.
Council Ewes?
Here.
Council Alamon?
Here.
Council Wolverton?
Here.
Council Seem?
Here.
Council Jen?
Here.
Council Smith?
Here.
Council Nels?
Here.
Council Andrews?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here. That's pretty good. All right. Next is the reading of the minutes from a specially called council meeting of January 31, 2022. Those have previously been distributed. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading and for approval of the same.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Wolverton, second by Ms. Nels. Y'all pointed each other. Y'all both pointed at each other. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0. Next, we have board vacancies. We'll start with a BZA Ward 2 appointment, and I'll turn to the Ward 2 reps.
Sure. We would like to nominate Scott Alsabrook for the BZA appointment for Ward 2.
All right. And Mr. Wolverton, will you second that?
I will.
Which app would you like to use?
Great.
I will second it, not Siri.
All right. And I believe this was our only applicant. That's the reason we didn't need to do interviews, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, but he is a great applicant, so we're glad to see him.
Fantastic. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and congratulations to Mr. Alsabrook. Then we also have a historic preservation appointment for Ward 3, I believe?
Yes. Ward 3 Historic Preservation Commission. Dennis Jones applied. He actually attended the historic preservation meeting last week, or two weeks ago, rather, and we would like to nominate him for the position.
Great. And we have a motion for Mr. Jones?
Second.
Second from Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0. Congratulations to-
And Mr. Jones is here.
Oh.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Jones.
Well, still sent you a letter, please.
All right. We have one addition to the agenda tonight. This will be to other new business. It is 11:02:22. Request for consideration of emergency funding for repair and replacement of a pipe collapse at Malaga and Lopredo brought to us by Berkeley Squires, our Public Works Director, and J.J. Bischoff, Chief of Staff. With that one addition, I would entertain a motion, a second for approval of the amended agenda. So, wow. Motion by Mr. Gualphie, second by Ms. Nels. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you think people had reservations or something?
All right. We don't have anything on the consent agenda, so we will move on to the old business agenda, and I'm going to take one item out of order. It is item 12:01:22. Public hearing set for tonight for consideration to amend the final development plan at 2727 18th Street South and 1817 27th Avenue South. The applicant is Homewood Hotel LLC. This is an update to the plan to reflect the as-built conditions. This comes to us from the Planning Commission within 8 to 0 with 1 absent vote. Favorable recommendation of the amended development plan. So with that, I will open this public hearing, but we are going to continue the public hearing to February 28, and we will take public comment at that time. All right. Next item, 0601:22. Public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a sign variance at 2818 18th Street South brought to us by Andrew Tynes, Shea's, and Mammoth Murals. And we'll start with a report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes. We met last week and heard from Mammoth Murals, and we voted 5 to 0 to refer this item out back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing this evening. Motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Ms. Andrews.
All right. So with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing and ask if there is anyone to speak for or against this item. Come on up.
How are y'all doing tonight?
And if you will, just give us your name for the record. I know you were here at committees, but-
Excuse me. My name is Andrew Tynes. I am a co-owner of Mammoth Murals and Signs. We paint signs and murals of all kinds and types. Fond de Shea contacted us about doing some signage on the back of her building that's a little more, just like what she feels like is her style. So we've come up with a couple of different revisions to kind of just get the ball rolling on it. You know, we just are trying to be as tasteful as possible. I think, I hope, I think Wyatt has kind of shown or updated the designs on there.
Are these the ones up on the screen here?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. And so I know the concern in the last week's meeting was that maybe it felt a little bit too big, so we've offered a variation that's just a little bit smaller, you know, 54 square feet. I think one of the first one I had was like 56 square feet. This one's about 30 square feet. I did want to make note, just kind of from a distance, from like where it is in relation to the street, the back of the building is actually a lot further away from, you know, the closest street than the front is, so it would actually benefit from a larger sign, but that's, you know, up to y'all. Again, I'm just here to offer some tasteful solutions. You know, whatever we end up painting is going to look great, so.
Mr. Tynes, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
After, so I wanted to make sure that I knew kind of what we were talking about. So after the meeting last week, I drove over there, and there are actually two signs up on the back of the building. I'm assuming those will be coming down?
Yeah. So we'll take those down, just uninstall them, you know, caulk or cement, whatever holes are, you know, give it a new base coat, and then just paint right over it, so you won't be able to tell.
Okay. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any other comments or questions from council.
I think it looks nice. I'd like to make a motion to accept.
All right. The smaller one?
Before we do that, we got to know what sign we're talking about, aren't we?
This one.
Well, you said there are multiple options, so that's-
Okay.
Well, I think that based on the fact that we had an issue with the large amount size, and that this is a nice tasteful alternate, and that while I understand the point that it may be harder to view from the street, I think if people are looking for Shea's, and they're going to roll up on the parking lot, they're going to be able to see what they're looking for, and so I'd like to make a motion to accept this particular-
The 30-square-foot sign.
30-square-foot sign.
Okay. All right. We have a motion from Mr. Alamon and a second from Ms. Nels. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And that is 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 2218.
You're all good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right. Which brings us to 0701:22. Public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a sign variance at 2834 18th Street South brought to us by Mick Britton of Nado, King Fisher Signs, and Wyatt Pugh of our Building Department. And we'll start with another report from Special Issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes. We met last week, heard from both the owner of Nado and Mr. Britton, and voted 5 to 0 to send the item out back to full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing. Motion was made by Ms. Andrews and seconded by Mr. Nels.
All right. So with that, I will open the public hearing on this matter and ask if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Mick Britton. I'm the owner of King Fisher Signs and Graphics.
Okay. We were approached by Jessica from Nado as they are moving locations from their current location to the new address, 2834 18th Street South. We are aware that the signs on the front of the building cannot be illuminated anyway. They just need to be dimensional lettering or something similar. But the people at Nado at their present location have this very nice illuminated channel lettering sign on the side of the building, and they asked if we could relocate that to the rear of the building, to the parking lot, where most of the other businesses there also have signs facing the parking lot. And that's what we're here for, to get approval for that, hopefully.
All right. Mr. Pugh, can you remind us of what the variant, because there are multiple variances here, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. Brian, would you mind pulling that back up? And there we go. Variance 1 is a request for one additional sign to face the rear parking lot. Downtown District 2 permits one sign on a storefront. So they're asking for a numbers variance. Variance number 2 is for an illuminated sign. This district does not permit internally illuminated signs. Variance number 3 would be a character height variance. The ordinance sets the limit on the maximum height of any letter or logo at 24 inches. This particular, I'm not sure if that's a flower or what that is, but it's-
It's just that one piece, right?
It's just that one piece that would require a variance.
I believe it's an artichoke.
Artichoke. That's the word I was looking for.
Fantastic. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Yeah. Come on up.
Do you need me to leave?
No, no, you can stay. If you'll just give her a little room, you'll be fine.
First of all, I think both of those signs are lovely and very tasteful.
Ms. Herr, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt you, but can you just state your name for the record, so that I know who you are, but I just want to make sure that everyone else does.
Carol and Herr, 3108 Overton Drive.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. I think both of these signs are lovely, and I think they are both very tasteful. I don't have a problem with his request, but I would just ask for what consistency there will be between the two signs, the one that was reduced in size versus this one that's even larger than what was requested by the Shea's sign. So that's all I wanted to say, is I think they're both lovely. I think they are very tasteful. I think the one that Shea's presented first would have been more in keeping with this one than the one that was approved, so I just wanted to mention the consistency.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Anybody else here to speak for or against this item?
Jessica Mackin, 203 Windsor Drive, or in this case, Nado. If I could just make a point again, that the sign already exists facing Central, and really, it's the same sign that's going to be facing the same traffic. Even though it's facing Linden, it's still going to be facing incoming traffic on Central. So I just wanted to make that point. And it would be nice not to have to trash that sign, so let's recycle. Anyway, that's all I've got.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So the Shea's sign is 30 square feet. I don't think this sign is 30 square feet, right?
That's 56.
Oh, this one's 56? Okay, so this one-
58.
Okay. I can't see that. Eyes are too bad. Okay, okay. And I did drive by after the meeting last week to see what it looked like up on the side of the building, and I think, like, I do, I think it's a lovely sign.
To clarify, the sign's size is compliant, based on that comment, correct, that I see?
Except for the orange.
For the, yeah.
Can I just clarify that?
Sure.
The reason I put that on there is I was using the criteria for the one permitted sign.
Correct.
So this is, would actually be-
Really definitely a sign. I got you.
It would be compliant if it were the-
Front sign.
The one front sign.
That's right.
So that brings me up to what I was going to ask, which is, is there already a front sign that's placed? I haven't been downtown in a few weeks, but-
Well, I don't think it's there yet, because it's still- Because kaba cycle still hasn't come down, so we're-
Right. I guess is there already a sign that was approved or manufactured for the front? I guess I'm just wondering, I understand we're talking about recycling the sign. I'm just wondering why-
We have not-
What's that?
We've designed a sign for the front, but it's not been approved by Nado.
Yeah, so we're, so we wanted to get through this hoop first before-
Yeah. I guess I was wondering, I was just curious if it was possible to use this sign for the front, or-
It's illuminated.
But illumination is only if you've got it wired in, right? I mean, it doesn't-
Have to illuminate it.
Sure. It would need a variance if you were going to turn it on, but yeah.
And I think, I think, well, I just know that because I went over into work with the building that they're doing, because they're renovating the building to make it more functional or current or for, but part of what they're doing is trying to make it more historically accurate to how it was when it was at the theater. So I think they wanted to do a sign on the front that took advantage of that, whatever that thing is called.
Yeah, there's the, there's the marquee.
Marquee, yeah.
Deco, yeah, that sort of facade.
Yeah.
And then once we get the kaba cycle down, we're going to be able to see if the, how the structure is, because there might be some damage that we're going to have to do. So we just wanted to take it one sign at a time, basically.
Yeah. But I think they thought that this sign wasn't in keeping with the historical nature of the marquee on the front. They kind of wanted to do something that was more keep, that was my understanding, I think.
Correct.
Yeah.
I just wanted to think about all options that we have potentially on the table.
No, I appreciate that. And to follow up with that-
Especially if your other one's not made yet.
Right. Yeah. To follow up, I mean, you could still use this sign not illuminated on the back as well, correct? Would you consider that? Correct. Okay. That would definitely be a consideration, for sure. Because there are no other illuminated signs on the back of any of those buildings, are there? Unless the, your wall went in.
I can confirm. I read about twice last week, and unless their sign is broken, it is not working. No signs are lit back there.
Okay.
So I agree with Council Gear, that it would be nice if it was not illuminated and no power ran to it.
Okay.
Yeah, consistency is good.
Anyone else from the public here to speak for or against this item? Not then I'll close the public hearing, and anybody got any other questions or comments from council?
I just wanted to make one comment in reply to the concern from the citizen, which is, I think, in addition to the size with the prior sign, we're also trying to look at, you know, each sign on the back tends to have a tagline associated with the business, and then there, the prior sign also had a lot of other language on there, and I think that that's the discrepancy that we were looking at as more so than the size. So I just want to reference that as far as consideration goes.
You're talking about the sort of, went across the line into an advertisement as opposed to a billboard versus a wayfinding sign. Any other questions or comments?
Just one more comment.
Yeah.
If, I know that we have, we've considered passing this along to a different committee for signs, and I would like them to consider secondary signage on buildings downtown, since we have had so many who've wanted secondary signs. I think we need to have some standards for those.
Okay. All right.
Well, it does encourage people to park in the back rather than take parking on the main drag, if we can have duplicate signs, because it does look like another storefront.
So where we are is there are three variances requested. If someone wants to make a motion about all three, two, any combination of them, you can do that. So whatever motion anyone feels appropriate, I would entertain.
I'd like to make a motion. Could we see the, could we see the-
Yeah, Brian, can you pull the list back up of the, can you move it over so we can see the variance requests?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this sign for the backside of Nado with the, with the addition that they do not illuminate the sign.
So in other words, we would, this would be a motion for variances number one and three, but not two?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion from Ms. Gear, second from Ms. Andrews.
Can I have one?
Yes, sir.
With, on the, the drawing, what is the, the wall color going to be? Is it, is it going to be?
Alabaster? Are we alabaster on next to here? I can't remember. It's some sort of white.
Okay.
It'll show up. It'll show up.
Okay, okay.
It's not that, they can see that.
I know, I know that. I'd figure that it would not be the same color, so I just didn't know what color it was going to be, so.
Right, yeah. It'll be, it'll be a nice sort of, like, alabastery.
Alabaster. Okay. Thank you. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 2219. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next item, 0901:22. Public hearing set for February 28, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. for consideration to rezone 2916 Linden Avenue from C1 Office Building District to C4 Central Business District. The applicant is Streisner Investment Company. The owners, Daniel and Chase Streisner, to facilitate a new commercial development. The planning commission had a vote of 6 to 2 with 1 absent for a favorable recommendation of the rezone, and we will hear that at our next meeting on the 28th. Next item, 1001:22. Public hearing set for February 28, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. for consideration to rezone 3006 Cook Street from C2 Neighborhood Shopping District to R7 Attached Dwelling Unit District. The applicant is John Abernathy of BRE Cook Street LLC. This is to facilitate the construction of a six-unit townhome development. Planning Commission had a vote of 7 to 1 with 1 absent for a favorable recommendation of the rezone. We will also hear that one on the 28th. Next item, 1101:22. Public hearing set for February 28, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. for consideration to rezone 2821 Central Avenue from C4 Central Business District to M1 Light Manufacturing District. The applicant is the City of Homewood, and the owner is Taco Partners LLC. For those lots comprising the subject property that were unintentionally included in the rezone of the original parcel in December 2014, ordinance number 2542. Planning Commission had a vote on this one of 8 to 0 with 1 absent for a favorable recommendation of the rezone. That one also will be carried over and heard on the 28th. Next item, 2601:22. Public hearing set for February 28, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. for consideration for condemnation of the dwelling structure at 1681 Ashwood Lane brought to us by Wyatt Pugh of our Building Department. This item will also be carried over and heard on the 28th. Next item, 1310:21. Bid opening held on December 17 at 2:10 p.m. for Lancaster Sidewalk Project brought to us by Kale Smith, our city engineer, and we'll start with a report from Finance. Dr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met February 7 and voted 4 to 0 to recommend accepting the bid from Southeastern Coating, so 4 to 0 out of Finance.
All right. And Mr. Smith, correct me if I'm wrong about this, but I think we are still waiting on the contract and the performance bond, so the appropriate motion here would be pending Mr. Kendrick's review of the contract and receipt of the performance bond.
I have a contract. It's not an issue.
Oh, okay. We just need this, have they signed it yet?
No.
Okay, so just, so just the receipt of a signed contract and the performance bond. Okay.
I would add that to the, I would add that amendment to, from the floor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr.-
And the legislature would take this part of the resolution.
Okay. Part of the same resolution, correct. Okay.
Yeah.
So we have a motion to amend that from Mr. Jones. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Smith. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and will be 2220. All right. Next item, 1410:21. Bid opening held on February 7, 2022 at 4:31 p.m. for Salter Sidewalk Project, also brought to us by Kale Smith. Same thing here, I believe, Mr. Kendrick, do you have this contract as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this one will also just be pending receipt of the signed contract and the performance bond, if someone is willing to make that motion.
I would move.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. A second from Mr. Gualphie. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and will be 2221. All right. Next item, 0511:21. Bid opening held for, held on January 24, 2021 at 4:45 p.m. with bids due at 4:30 for two stormwater pipe rehabilitation projects at Lopredo Place and Park Ridge brought to us by Kale Smith, and another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend accepting the bid for industrial, video industrial services. Motion was made by Council Smith and seconded by Council Hart.
All right. So we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 2222. All right. 0801:22. Bid opening set for January 31, 2022 at 5:00 p.m. for demolition of 175 Citation Court brought to us by Berkeley Squires, our Public Works Director, and another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Committee met after hearing from Mr. Squires, voted 5 to 0 to recommend accepting the bid from Meredith Environmental and amending the budget for that contract.
All right. Thank you very much. We have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 2223. Next item, 1801:22. Request for consideration of placing full-page ad in the Chamber of Commerce magazine brought to us by Counselor Smith, and we have another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of funding up to 2,250, and I would like to have personal privilege just to thank Mrs. Smith for her hard work in this endeavor. It's going to look great. We're going to leverage- Her artistry that she's going to do for this, for free.
She'll be artistic.
That's right. And we're going to leverage the world game, so exciting. So that is a motion 5 to 0 out of Finance.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and will be 2224. Next item, 1901:22. Request for consideration of discontinuing contract within court and using government portal credit card processor brought to us by John Morgan, our Court Administrator and Chief Magistrate, and another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
I just realized Mr. Morgan's here.
He is.
You didn't have to be here, but, anyway, the Committee did meet and vote 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item, so 5 to 0.
All right. Thank you very much. We have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0 as well, and will be 25, 2225. Next item, 2001:22. Request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract and pay fiscal year 2122 appropriation to Class Tran brought to us by Robert Burgett, our Finance Director, and Melody Salter, our City Clerk, and another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This is a budgeted item. The Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right. We have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That also passes 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 2226. 2101:22. Request to authorize landscape design services for Salter Road Pocket Park brought to us by Kale Smith, and another report from Finance.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval for the amount of 28,500 to GMC, so 5 to 0 out of Finance.
All right. We have another motion from Finance. Any- All right. We have another motion from finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to zero and will be resolution 2227. 021221, request for consideration of Forest Brook sidewalk engineering and design work on Forest Brook Drive from Forest Brook Circle to West Oxmore Road via Shades Glen Drive and Delkris Drive, brought to us by Counselors Alamon and Wolverton, and another report from finance.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of funding of 38,000, so five to zero out of finance.
All right. We have another motion from finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and will be resolution 2228. All right. Next item, 290122, request for consideration of adding gutters at the 100 block of Yorkshire, brought to us by Counselor Andrus. We've got two reports. I'll start with the one from Public Works.
Yes, Counselor, or, Mr. President, we met last week and the committee voted five to zero to recommend approval of the indemnification agreement. Motion was made by Counselor Sims, seconded by Counselor Gere.
All right. And then also a report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The, our committee voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item. We did talk within committee that it was gonna be within the ARPA funds, but the recommendation from department heads is that that come out of small infrastructure. So I would, I would make that motion from the floor to approve of this item coming out of small infrastructure.
I'll second that.
All right. So we have a motion from Mr. Jones, a second from Mr. Harden. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and will be resolution 2229. We did. It was from Mr. Harden.
It was Mr. Harden?
Yes. Next item, 040122, request to add public parking at Old Homewood Police Station on 29th Avenue South in the Bay, brought to us by Sue Grafus and Counselor Andrus, and we'll start with a report from Public Safety, Mr. Gualtney.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met and voted five to zero to recommend approving this item. The motion was made by Counselor Wolverton and seconded by Counselor Harden. However, I do have an update. I thought we were referring this to finance because it's going to require funding, and I have that price, which is 410739. Okay. That's perfect. That's why I wanted to make sure we were sitting at finance.
Yeah.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Is that, is that to remove the tank? Is that?
The meter.
What was it, what was he on?
It's 41.
4100?
4100, 410739.
All right. So we will send that to finance to be heard next week.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I was just gonna ask, was there a recommendation on where that, where that would be coming out of?
It's not that. It's a bigger place. That's why we thought it was one of the mains.
Okay. Okay. I don't, I don't think one's been made yet.
Okay, we'll accept that then.
Okay. All right. Next item, 230122, request for consideration of traffic calming measures along South Forest Drive, brought to us by Counselor Sims, and we'll have another report from Public Safety, Mr. Gualtney.
Yes, sir. The committee met and voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item, and the motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Counselor Wolverton. And just one point of clarification, this is for a temporary traffic calming chicane.
Thank you. I was about to say.
At a location TBD.
Got it. All right.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, absolutely.
I wasn't sure this is, I think this is the first time we've kind of moved forward with something like this that wasn't permanent. So I wasn't sure if the item was gonna end up going back to Public Safety to, as a placeholder to evaluate. I know we talked about doing a further traffic study after something's implemented, but.
I think, given the fact that there will be somewhat, a good amount of time, I think we probably will put it back on there. I mean, these are, these are temporary, so they, there's no way they're gonna last forever. So, so anyway, I would, I would recommend that we just bring that back up at the appropriate time after we've had some time to, to let the neighborhood view it, give us their thoughts about it, and, and we make a determination at that time.
Okay. Just wanted to.
No, it's a good question.
Yep.
All right. Mr. Sims, do you have a question?
Yes, I was just gonna add on, I mean, that, that one, that that sounds good because obviously there'll be considerations of, does it work? And if it does, and you move towards permanent infrastructure, you'll need to, you know, have it budgeted in the upcoming, you know, fiscal year. The other thing, I was just gonna say from the standpoint of working with, with Kale, working on this, we have received some additional feedback from residents in regards to the placement of these. So since it's TBD, we will just share that with you and follow up, so.
Sounds good. No, no. All right. Any, we have a motion from Public Safety. Any other questions or comments?
I do have a question, just for clarification. How do you, how do we, how is Mr. Kendrick gonna write a resolution if we don't know where the location's gonna be?
Yeah, there is.
This is the city council, but adoption resolution, authorize cities, it's called temporary traffic calming, and there's a general describing exhibit, which is what he ended up doing yesterday.
But if you're saying location TBD, I guess I thought that would be part of the resolution.
Well, it's recommended by.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think he had some kind of replacement for Kale.
So I guess my question is, if there's any changes to that, then would that have to come back to council? Or is that binding because it's in? Okay, good. Okay. So, so there's still.
We're giving the engineer discretion.
That's perfect. Okay, thanks.
Yep. All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and will be resolution 2230. All right. Next item, 260122, public hearing set for February 28, 2022 at 6:00 PM for consideration of condemnation. Oops. Hang on. Have we already done that?
I thought we moved that.
Yeah, 260, we've already done that one. Okay. Yeah, it's on there twice. That's okay. We just, we just really wanted to make sure everyone's here for that one next, next meeting. All right. 240122, request for consideration of a tent variance for Trinity United Methodist Church, brought to us by Counselor Smith, and a report from special issues for Ms. Smith.
Yes. Committee voted five to zero to recommend approving the tent variance. Motion was made by Ms. Gere and seconded by Ms. Andrus.
All right. We have a motion from special issues. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to zero and will be resolution 2231. 250122, request for consideration to work in the right-of-way to place a temporary construction barrier on part of the public sidewalk during the demolition and renovation of the facade at 2808 18th Street South, brought to us by John Torrey of Circa Lighting and Wyatt Pugh. And we will start with a report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, we had the pleasure of hearing from Mr. Torrey last week, and the committee, after, after listening and, and discussing, voted five to zero to recommend approval, and that motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Gere.
Thank you very much. We have a motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think it would just say that that included the proper indemnification agreement. Sorry, did you?
Yeah, great, thank you. Good point of clarification. Thank you. All right. So that was 11 to zero and will be resolution 2232. Which brings us to the committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the committee referral agenda.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Gualtney, second from, what was that, Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to zero as well. Which brings us to other new business. 050222, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a front yard fence variance at 601 Oakmore Drive, brought to us by Jeff and Emily Evans and Wyatt Pugh. Mr. Kendrick, is it all right if we set that for the 14th? Okay. Considering what we have on the 28th, everything that we have on the 28th, we're. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna set that for March, or meeting on March 14th. All right. 060222, request to set a public hearing for consideration of ordinance to adopt 2021 building codes, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. Is this one also okay for the 14th, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes.
Okay. That one will also be set for March 14th. All right. 070222, request to set a public hearing for consideration of an ordinance to adjust building permits and fees, also brought to us by Wyatt Pugh. We will also set that one for March 14th. All right. That brings us to 080222, request for consideration of an ABC 020 Restaurant Retail Liquor License for Seafood King Inc. LLC, doing business as Seafood King, located at 180 State Farm Parkway, brought to us by Melody Salter, our city clerk, and Robert Burgett, our finance director. Mr. Gualtney, I understand that we've got a letter of no objection from FIRE.
Correct. We still need one from HPD.
Okay, so the proper motion here would then be pending receipt of that from the police. Okay. So they need, but they still need the police approval, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Mr. Gualtney. Second. Second by Mr. Sims. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero. Next item, 090222, request for consideration of an ABC 240 nonprofit special event retail license for Homewood Chamber of Commerce, doing business as Taste of Homewood, located at 2850 19th Street South, right out in front here, brought to us by Melody Salter, our city clerk, and Robert Burgett, our finance director. And I see Ms. Brennan is here tonight to see this through. This does not require those letters, as I understand it, so this is just a motion for approval.
So moved. Motion second.
Motion by Mr. Harden, second by Ms. Smith.
Yeah, when is the date?
March 10th.
March 10th.
March 10th. Can't wait.
We have to get to a letter.
Hopefully it'll start to warm up. All right. Motion by Mr. Harden, second by Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero. All right. 100222, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of February 1, 2022 through February 14, 2022, brought to us by Robert Burgett, our finance director, Melody Salter, our city clerk. Mr. Jones has said.
Counselor Alamon reviewed.
Congratulations.
I, I had the pleasure of reviewing the vouchers for this time period. I will want to point out that it does seem that we, we have all these different contracts, especially when we're talking about the cell phone services. And I think that's something we definitely need to look at. We have three different vendors. The price points are all different, and I think that we can be intentional about how we make purchases so that we're more consistent and also trying to save the city money. And, and by what I was looking at, there's a great discrepancy based on companies. That's also true for pest control. I mean, I think there's different ways that each department seems to be operating as their own units, and so if there's a way to bring some uniformity so that we can best, get best cost, that would be fantastic. But having said all that, everything looks in order, but I just think that we can do a better job of trimming.
I would agree with you.
Was that a motion for centralized procurement?
I would love for us to have a conversation about procurement and oversight in that.
I think we absolutely should.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll take your motion for now, just to be, as to these invoices, but, but we'll talk about that one too. All right. Motion by Mr. Alamon. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and I lost. 33, 2233. Yes, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm so glad you said that because Mr. Burgett is, is working on some proposals now, and he's been doing some, you know, analyzing of, of all the different vendors, so, I mean, he, he's gonna come up with some recommendations, so.
Fantastic.
At least start with that.
Yeah. All right. And our last item, 110222, request for consideration of emergency funding for repair replacement of a pipe collapse at Malaga and La Prado, brought to us by Berkeley Squires, our Public Works Director, and J.J. Bischoff, our Chief of Staff. I think everyone has been brought up to speed on this. This was, obviously, as it says, a pipe collapse, so we obviously need to work on this. Mr. Jones, is there anything that we need to speak to on it? Or do you have all the information you need?
Yeah, I have everything that I need. I would, I'd move to, to approve the expenditure. Do we, let's see.
Is it under 50, Walter?
I'm trying to find where the.
They said it was ARPA, but I'm just.
Coming out of ARPA money.
Yeah, it was, yeah, the expenditure up to 48,000, I believe. Okay, 47,500. And what's your recommended funding source again?
Is it ARPA?
ARPA, okay, okay. Then I would, I would move to approve 47,500 under ARPA for the emergency repair of Malaga and La Prado.
All right. We have a motion from Mr. Jones, a second from Ms. Smith. Any other questions?
I have a question. Mr. Squires, how do, I mean, I drove by it, and obviously we got a bunch of cones around it. How do you guys know when that's happening? What's causing, what's telling you that?
Usually, I got, we seen a little hole starting, it starts filling down.
In the asphalt?
We got, we got a woman replied to Monday's letter about.
Usually on those are in the middle, it usually will start, but you get a sinkhole, it starts forming. But it's collapsed so much in the middle, we, that problem in there, we couldn't get it to about five foot in there and it shut off, so we're trying to figure out how long it goes to the other side, so we gotta, we're going to dig down in there because it's got a void up underneath it, so.
How is it related to the other one that's just a block away?
Different. Just, back then, Janice, a lot of that stuff over in Hollywood, there was different stuff used back in those days. I mean, this is a, basically a corrugated plastic pipe that, no tile's gonna collapse, which is what it done, so.
Just coincidental, the location that it's just a block away from?
Some of those are there, you know, 80 and 100 years old, and, you know, a lot of them are terracotta, a lot of them are, you know, plastic like that, and they just, over time, just erode down on it, and so, I mean, we try to tunnel most of them when we can, so hopefully when we do this stormwater study, that'll give us some butter. I did, but a lot of those is just, you know, get down in there once they collapse and see what's going on. Because, buddy, it ties into the concrete pipe, so.
And Berkeley, they won't all be done at the same time, like the one she's talking about?
We've already authorized the other guy.
No, the other one will be done. We're gonna try to do some of this one. We've gotta dig down to see how far this one is before Ned and then get in there to start fixing it, so the other one's already on the schedule to be done.
Okay. And like Woodbine, that's already scheduled too?
Same thing. And, uh, that one, actually, Woodbine's the same thing we got going to Riviera. Riviera, we're waiting on pipe for that.
Okay.
There's a certain section of pipe, a concrete pipe, you can't get. So that's, that's been the whole of Riviera, and Woodbine has been that size of pipe.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and will be resolution 2234, which brings us to the end of our agenda. The mayor is actually out sick tonight, so we will start with Mr. Gualtney. I will, just a reminder that next week is President's Day, so we do not have committees, and those will be on the 28th before council. So as yours, as yours, whatever the start time is, we'll, we'll figure out the order, I guess, after that.
I think we'll probably have to work backwards, right?
Probably.
If you wanna go fast, why's it having to have to go in four?
I would think so.
I'm hoping to make this easy. The only item that we would have to discuss would be 220122, and that's Counselor Alamon of Wolverton's project, traffic calming project in Forest Brook Drive to Forest Brook Circle. Are you guys gonna be ready to present anything on that, or should we carry it over and? Okay.
Yeah, we've already been discussing with.
I'll set Public Safety for 15 minutes at 4:45. I guess, are we setting a time, or just work backwards?
Yeah, we're gonna, how long do you think finance?
15 minutes. I mean, we really don't have, we only have a couple of items, new items.
5:15, after finance.
After finance.
Pencil me in.
All right.
No other comments?
Thank you. Ms. Gere?
I'd just like to say that Arts Council met this afternoon, and they're in discussions with Rusty Holly about adding some additional, a few additional events to We Love Homewood Day. They.
Day, they, they were pretty much wiped off the schedule last year due to COVID, and so they're looking forward to easing back into being back out in the community, and so they kind of, they, they hope that they can provide a few art, dance, music-related events during that 10 to 3 o'clock hours at Central Park, and they're going to, those are going to focus on kid activities and also diversity in the community, so they're looking forward to that, and more details to come, thanks.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Alma.
I'd just like to wish everyone Happy Valentine's Day, it is my daughter's birthday today, she turns 10, and I still have the privilege to spend it with you all, so that's great. I also did want to say that, as I was reviewing vouchers today, I sat in a little, on the beginning of the Beautification Committee, and I'll say that we have a lot of committee residents here at Homewood who spend their time and give of themselves to really try to bring improvement to our, our city, and so it's just great how many people, including the Arts Council, who give of their time to, to a place they really care about, and I'm always just awestruck by, by the folks that we have living here, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolverton.
I was just going to ask, actually, Counselor Sims might know, or Mr. Smith, how much longer are we taking input for the stormwater?
Till March 1st.
Okay, so just a reminder-
Tomorrow.
Yeah, what's that?
The stormwater is implemented tomorrow, I think Kale has a flyer.
So, yeah, I was going to put out a reminder for that, which I'm sure somebody else can follow up-
Yeah.
More, in more detail, but I didn't, unless I missed something, I don't see anything that is pressing on Public Works, so, and the one, the one item that's there doesn't, doesn't need to be discussed necessarily next, next week, or in two weeks.
Zero minutes.
Zero minutes.
That's efficient.
It is efficient, but yeah, so just wanted to say Happy Valentine's Day to everybody and Happy Birthday to Amelia, and we just, obviously, want to thank our loved ones for letting us be here tonight as well, so, that's it.
Mr. Sims.
Thank you so much, yes, just want to wish everyone a Happy Valentine's Day and also Happy Black History Month, my son, Jackson, who's four, we went to the library this weekend, or actually he and my wife did, and they really have done a great job curating the children's section, so if you haven't checked that out for Black History Month, please be sure to do so, and that's everything I have, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
We'll just have Finance right after Public Safety and-
I thought you were at 5:00.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He switched. Okay, we're not sure we're going to need to go before 5:00 yet, so, okay, then I'm starting at 5:00. Yeah, yeah, 15 minutes, and that's all I have.
All right, Ms. Smith.
This is exciting, I'm not going to set Special Issues, we're going to hold off talking about Christmas trees until the first meeting in March, because the other item that I have is not set for public hearing until the second March, not even the first March meeting. Not setting Special Issues, but I would like to tag on to what Mr. Alamon said about our wonderful volunteers in this community, the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission met last week, they are just doing amazing things, they're, they're working on grants, grant funding to try to work on projects in Rosedale, they're really trying to make positive motion in that area, and they're really trying to do exciting new things, so I just want to thank all the members of that commission because they're really working hard, appreciate them.
I missed it, when were we set that 601, the fourth time?
That is set for, if we set the public hearing for-
For the 14th.
Yeah, so we're not going to deal with that in commission, yeah, so if you call them and tell them, they don't have to worry about coming.
Sure, okay.
All right, Ms. Nels.
I wanted to thank Kale for the information he shared about the stormwater, you know, yes, I wanted to thank you in advance because, you know, we were able to start sharing that information over a month ago, just on various social media platforms and in our newsletter and all of that, yeah, and really just sending out emails, so I appreciate the information all in one batch that we could send out, so that's, I thought that was very helpful, and thank you, and Happy Valentine's, everybody.
Thank you very much, Ms. Andrus.
Okay, I, I do need to set P and D, so you said 15 minutes, Andy, okay, so I'll, I'll go at 5:30, and I, I'd like to, I was going to carry over Wyatt's two, two items, but if I've got 30 minutes, I'm just going to go ahead and knock that out, so, okay, so I'll be meeting at 5:30, I wanted to thank JJ and Berkeley for responding to Lopredo and, anyway, thank you to Kale for Lancaster, and we just have a lot of stuff going on, and I want to thank everybody for their help with that, poor Lopredo, getting a little hammered right now down in that area, so, anyway, that's all I've got.
All right, Mr. Harden.
I too want to say Happy Valentine's Day, and want to thank Meredith Drennan for the great job she does for the Chamber of Commerce, I show up at some of her board meetings, but not all of them, but I think our chamber's doing a fabulous job, and I think she's got good leadership there, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much, okay, so I'm just going to recap here, Finance will start at 5 o'clock on February 28th, Public Safety will start as soon as Finance is over, the estimate being somewhere around 5:15, but, but will be whenever Finance is done, and then Public, I'm sorry, Planning and Development will start whenever Public Safety is done. All right, as Ari mentioned a little bit, but let me just state it again, for Mr. Smith, the Stormwater Public Input Meeting is, or tomorrow, or at least start tomorrow, February 15th, they will, there's one from, make sure I get this right, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and from 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM, and they will be in this room, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, all right, so please show up and, and tell us about any stormwater issues that you've got, so that we can include those in the upcoming study that we've got working. All right, and then lastly, Happy Valentine's Day to everyone, and especially Happy Valentine's Day to all these spouses and birthday people that are going without or starting late tonight, so everyone go home and, and enjoy yourselves, thank you very much, and we will adjourn this meeting.